I'll call the AIR Select Board to order for Wednesday, March 6, 2024. This meeting slash hearing of the AIR Select Board will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting slash hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom and Channel 8. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom meeting ID number 897-9080-793 or by calling 929-205-6099. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Carly Antinelli, Assistant Town Manager at ATM, at AIRMA, or 978-772-8220, extension 100, prior to the meeting. I ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with equity and justice for all.
Are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
Not now.
Okay. I don't have any.
I'll make a motion that the board approve the agenda as presented.
I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And Chair says aye. Agenda is approved. There are no announcements this evening, correct? No, no announcements. Excellent. Thank you. Moving on, we'll open it up for public input. If there's anyone here for public input this evening. No way for Pauline to join. Okay, last call for public input. All right. Thank you very much. All right. That first item on the agenda is joint appointment of associated planning board member by the Select Board and the Planning Board. I ask members, please come on up.
Good evening.
Hi.
It's a joint appointment.
It is a joint appointment, I believe.
It is.
I think we...
So...
I believe you gentlemen need to be up here. Listen, neighbor, don't try and get out of this.
We're lost in the weeds of MGL, okay? Sorry about that.
I don't know if I count, but I'm on Zoom.
She is.
Hi, Julie. Thank you.
Chair.
Yes.
I'd just like to note that the entire Planning Board has showed up, with the exception of one, has showed up, I think, that in itself is an indication of our enthusiasm for this applicant.
Excellent.
Thank you.
This doesn't count?
You count.
You count. I did say.
Laura, you're all really lit.
You have your glasses on backwards.
I hate when that happens.
So, as you know, according to our bylaws, the Planning Board has five elected members, but can also have two associates. And in the past, we haven't had any associate members. And as a consequence, we've run into difficulties from, well, occasionally forming a quorum, but even in addition to forming a quorum, having a supermajority necessary for special permits. And I thank Danny for definitely encouraging, lighting a fire under us to make this a more urgent objective. And fortunately, we received interest from Kathleen here, who submitted a letter of intent and a resume, which I believe have been submitted to you. She went through an interview with myself, Danny, the town planner, and Ken Diskin, the vice chair, and we were exceptionally impressed by both her background, her resume, and also her conduct. Subsequently, she came to the full board for a vote and approval of the board, which was unanimous, and I think all of us have been just very impressed by her attentiveness, the quality of her questions, her eagerness to participate, and her enthusiasm for the town.
Excellent. Kathleen, do you want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. I'm Kathleen. I'm currently a research assistant at WPI while I work on my PhD in data science, hopefully soon, next year. And my husband and I moved to town in the beginning of 2020. We live on Four Mountain View Avenue. I participate in the town as a member of the Executive Board of the Friends of the Air Library, and so I'm looking to kind of get involved in another manner, and Planning Board kind of fits my, like, technical interests and desire to kind of have learning experience. So I'm very excited about that and contributing to land use in the town.
Excellent. Well, we appreciate your willingness to step up and get involved, so thank you very much for that. Open up to any questions for Kathleen? I don't have any. Just very excited that the board is excited. I haven't seen so many smiles. All right. So for this appointment, Robert or Carly, so it has to be both boards are voting, is that correct?
So, I mean, I know...
Sorry, Danny.
No, no, it's okay. So I know the Planning Board on our, at our public hearing on this, she, we did vote, and they voted 5-0 unanimously to...
So you just need the vote of the Select Board at this point?
Correct.
Kathleen, can you tell me the correct pronunciation of your last name?
Kachal.
Kachal, okay. So I'll make a motion that the Select Board approve the appointment of Kathleen Kachal to the, as the Planning Board's associate member.
I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye. Well done, Kathleen. Thank you.
Congratulations. Wonderful.
Can I ask you one question? Associate or alternate, can I use them interchangeably?
Yes. Yes. So typically, yeah, it depends on the town. Sometimes you'll see associate, sometimes you'll see alternate. It's really just interchangeable.
Okay, so I'm gonna just pick what I feel.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Then up next, we have Danny Reeves, Town Planner, here this evening. Danny, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Can I? Oh, you're... So Mr. Chair, just while they're pulling that up, the Town Planner is here this evening to make a brief presentation for the board on the four, there are four proposed zoning bylaw articles for the spring town meeting, as the board is aware of. He'll give a brief overview of the four, any questions that the board may have, and the board will be reviewing and approving the warrant on April 2nd, which will include these. Also, as the board is aware, they require a presentation or a report from the Planning Board at town meeting, and that's subject to a 2/3 vote to pass. So with that, Danny's gonna give a overview of the four.
All right. Excellent. All right. Just a quick, so the, after this, the Planning Board will be holding a public hearing on these four zoning amendments on March 12, and I open it up to make sure that everyone comes to the Planning Board and voices their opinions on these amendments. All right. So the first, so we have four proposed zoning amendments. The first one is the adoption of the updated zoning map, reflecting the zoning changes that were approved at a previous town meeting. And I'll get more in depth into each of these as we go. The adoption of amending Section 320, 3.2A, Establishment of the ZBA to include language showing the structure and how many members make up the ZBA. The adoption of amending the Inclusionary Housing Bylaw, Section 320-10.3, Basic Requirements, by adding language regarding guidelines for affordable multifamily new construction. And the last one is the adoption of amending Section 5.2 Table Use of Regulations. All right. So this is the updated proposed zoning map, and really, there's only two minor changes on this map, and I'll zoom in so that everyone can see, but this is the overall map that we have currently. So the current proposed changes here are to the two parcels highlighted in red, 27 and 29 Harvard Road. So the reason we are updating the zoning map is at the October 25, 2021 town meeting, 29 Harvard Road was rezoned from general residence to general business by a citizen's petition, as well as 27 Harvard was rezoned the same way at the April 25, 2022 town meeting. When those were rezoned, the zoning map was never updated and adopted by town meeting. It was signed by the Planning Board after the fact, but the proper process is to have the zoning map also adopted when a property is being rezoned. So this is just to really codify that rezoning that was done by those two, at those two town meetings. Any questions on this?
No. Straightforward.
All right. The next one is the amendment to the zoning bylaw, to the ZBA section. So it currently, the way it reads is, there is hereby established a Board of Appeals, membership appointments in terms of regular and associate members shall be in accordance to the Chapter 40A and Massachusetts General Laws. Talking to town council while we were reviewing this, they suggested that we add in what our zoning board is made up of, you know, and so, because the state law actually references three or five, so just needed to specify, and so this next section, when you read below, that's underlined, we would be adding, "The Board of Appeals consists of five members and two alternate members who shall be residents of the Town of AIR, shall be appointed as provided by MGL 40A, Section 12." So that's the proposal for the second amendment. Any questions?
No. Seems very straightforward.
The next amendment we have is to the Inclusionary Housing Bylaw. So under Section 320-10.3 Basic Requirements, we are adding this following language. It's the basic requirements, it would say, "A, for design guidelines of preferred affordable multifamily new construction refer to Massachusetts multifamily new construction design requirements and guidelines developed by BHCD, DND, Mass Housing, and MHP." And then under that as a subsection, it would also reference, "The Planning Board shall have the authority to allow construction of multifamily housing under Section 10.3 of the AIR zoning bylaws to allow for the construction of new units to meet the target unit size referenced in Section 4B Design Guidelines of the Unit's Layouts and Interior Dimensions." So what that's basically referencing is this guideline, and this is from the state. This is their guideline on how to create more affordable housing within the state. And so the reason this is coming up is, under Section 6.3H1, we have a minimum requirement of 750 square feet for a dwelling unit on one floor, and this kind of affects any kind of project that would come forth as a multifamily, especially since it would trigger inclusionary housing if it's five units or more. Within this document, it has references towards target unit sizes for a studio, one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom, and four bedrooms. And what the state has found is that studios typically want to be around 500 square feet to make it more affordable for renting. It makes it a bit easier for people to rent, and the bigger, you know, the bigger the unit, the more the rent. And so that's how they're kind of looking to combat and provide more affordable units. And so, and then same with one bedroom, they're looking at around 600 square feet. Those two proposals would fall under the 750 square foot requirement that we have in our bylaw, which affects projects that want to propose those, you know, more affordable units. We have to find, try to find a way to make sure that projects that came in under the inclusionary housing would be, would still be able to build affordable units and at the sizes that were suggested by the state for what affordable units should be around. We kind of ran into this on a previous project, and so, and they, we had trouble kind of getting a way to allow that because of the 750. So what we did here is, it would allow any project that triggers the inclusionary housing. So if a project doesn't trigger inclusionary housing, the 750 square foot minimum still is still in place and would still manage, you know, those kind of units. If you have an inclusionary housing trigger, so five units or more, the Planning Board now has, would have the authority to allow you to meet those design guidelines, so meet those 500 square foot, 600 square foot for one, two, studio and one bedrooms. And this just, it promotes more affordable housing, and we really want to incentivize developers when they come in here to build affordable units and trigger this inclusionary housing bylaw that we have. As of now, we really haven't had any projects that have triggered this and have used it. We had that previous project, but we couldn't find a way to get around that 750. So this is one way we've found to kind of help that. And it's, the working group that came up, that has been working on this, we're looking at this as an aspect of affordable housing. That's our main view here, is how do we promote more affordable housing being built in Town of AIR?
Is this only for new construction projects?
Correct.
Okay. So any existing housing would still fall under the old?
Correct. Yes.
Thank you.
The next proposed amendment we have is to the Table of Uses. And so I highlighted it in red so that everyone can see. We have proposed, so under the A1 and A2 zone, the two-family dwellings would be allowed by right. Under the A1, A2, and general business, the townhouse or multifamily dwellings would be special permit by the Planning Board. On Section 1.6, we made an amendment from apartments to dwelling units, because we don't have a definition of apartments in our bylaw. Dwelling units is what we have. And then for 1.7, we made some, an amendment on the, just adding S to the units, to show that it's plural. And then the, we struck the ground floor of the building and replaced it as the elevation of the building at street level, just so that we were more clear as to exactly where that commercial portion of the, of the building needs to be. And then, under the downtown AIR Form Based Code, for some reason, it must have been missed that that was a no, but West AIR Village is permitted, so we wanted to make it, you know, cohesive, both make sure that they were permitted. And so we can kind of get into those. All right. So the main reason the working group is pushing for these amendments is, you know, again, affordable housing, increasing the amount of diverse, different types of housing stock in the town. We want to increase the more stock, diverse stock, and even the tiers of the cost for the housing stock. We want it to be a variety of it to allow for people who are currently in town and want to downsize or sell their house and still stay in town, or for people to enter, you know, enter this community and be able to join us. So currently, two-family dwellings are allowed by right in the general residence, downtown, the Form Based Codes, both of them, the mixed-use transitional and the general business. It only makes sense that a two-family dwelling would be allowed in an A1 and A2, which is residential. It's, that's a specific use of just residentials, which is, two families really don't have that much more of an impact than a single family does. It also helps add additional housing stock, and one of the big things to remember here is, any, anything that's being proposed here would still need to meet dimensional requirements that are in our bylaw. So it's not like, just because they're allowed in A1 and A2 now by right, they can just build them anywhere. It still needs to meet all of our dimensional requirements, still needs to go through the process of the building inspector, or the building commissioner reviewed, and if he still feels like maybe there's another permit that may go along with it, he would make, he would issue it, just like he does with any other project. Allowing the multifamily in the A1 and A2, along with the general business, by special permit, it just, it would a lot, make a couple of the properties, bigger properties in these zones, more viable for multifamily construction. It then allows for more people to trigger that inclusionary housing, which then leads to more affordable units, and it would be at an 80% AMI. So it's kind of, we're trying to find ways to really increase housing stock, diverse housing stock, and affordable units. The reason, I mean, and then we talked about the change from apartments to dwelling units, as well as the clarification on the 1.7.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, it was actually a very excellent presentation. Thank you.
Yeah. I think that's, yep, that's it.
Are there any questions in the audience? Can you just, Carly, can you check participants, please? Any questions online with presentations? No? All right. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much, Danny. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
All right. Up next, we have Alicia Hershey, Program Manager, Community Development Office.
Hi, guys.
Hi, Alicia. How are you?
Good.
Welcome.
Thank you. So as I came before you last time, a couple, a couple weeks back, on the CDBG grant application that we're working on, and as we're working on it, there's a number of things that we needed to update our community development strategy. Alan and I worked on that. Alan did a lot of the writing, but we worked on it together, and it's, it really gave us a chance to do a deep dive into all the different public outreach programs, all the departments in town have had over the last two years. So, and we took all that information that we gathered at those different public inputs, public forums, public hearings, and put together a strategy in general, and it's updated. We updated about every five years, and then the last one was updated for 2023, 2018 to 2023, and this one is 24 to 2029. Did you have any questions on it? The three emphasis that we're putting, so we have to tell them what we're interested in for CDBG grants in the next five years, and we have three different emphasis, including housing rehab, which is what we often do with them, and infrastructure, which we can go to streets that are predominantly low to moderate income, and we qualify them for infrastructure. We've done Pond Street, we've done School Street, we've done Pleasant Street, we've done a number of streets through CDBG along the way. And the last one is the senior center. There will be monies there when we get to the point of doing, actually building the senior center. So, so we've included all that in anticipation for future CDBG grants, too, in that community development strategy. So I just need you guys to approve it, or do you have questions?
I don't, I don't have any questions, Sean.
I know, it was very well written.
Yeah. Job well done.
All right. So you just need approval on it? I'll make a motion that the board approve the Town of AIR Community Development Strategy for 2024 to 2029 as presented.
I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And Chair says aye.
Thank you. So the next one is our, the grant we're going for this time is the Housing Rehabilitation Program. And there was just a lot, a little bit of housekeeping, changing it from Board of Selectmen to Select Board. And one other thing, I actually, for the longest time, we have done most of our housing rehab in our target area, which is really the downtown target area. That's where we have our environmental justice community, that's where we have more mixed housing, that sort of thing. I've done, I can do emergency outside of that, but I have a long list of people who have applied over the years for help outside of our target area, and AIR's not a gigantic area, bit, area in general. So I just changed it to say 25% could be used outside of the target area, so maybe I can catch up on some of those houses that really need to have a little help renovating. So that was one of my changes, and the other change was, just a second, I think that, oh, just how many grants somebody can come, align for one property, because we do have a couple, one or two people that is always there, looking for something. And so I want to make sure that we get it to everybody that is qualified. So that, those are the only changes in that.
All right. Excellent. No questions for me, Sean?
Same. No questions. So you need a motion on that, too?
Yeah.
Make a motion that the board approve the AIR Housing Rehabilitation Program Guidelines as presented.
I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And Chair says aye.
Thank you. And the last is just that you support the application.
Absolutely.
For sure.
That's a no-brainer.
Okay.
All right. Okay. I'll make a motion that the board approve the, or support the application for the CB D G, for the CB D G grant as presented.
I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And Chair says aye.
I'll give you that right now. Yeah. And then, and then Janice.
Actually, in the morning. Because I'm stamping Janice's name.
Perfect. Thank you. Guys, I'll set that. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Alicia.
Bye-bye.
All right. And moving on in the agenda, we have the Town Manager's Report. Mr. Fontaine.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. Do not have any action items this evening, so just briefly, I'll put my two items together, the administrative update and the, and the budget process update. So first, under the administrative update, I just want to thank the Town Clerk's Office and all of the election workers for another job well done in terms of yesterday's presidential primary election, and it's truly a team effort between her office, all the election workers. Special thanks to the Police Department for their support and the Facilities Department, and it was another very successful and smooth election here. You have the warrants in your packet that were approved and signed since the Select Board last met on February 20. And as far as the administrative update for this evening, as I know the board is aware, it's basically all things budget and town meeting preparation. So that goes to my second item, which is the FY25 Budget Process Update. So the development of the budget does remain on schedule in accordance with the town's budget calendar. I want to just announce again that the second public budget forum will be on Wednesday, March 27, at 6:00 PM. That'll be a joint meeting of the Select Board and the FINCOM in person. We'll also have the Zoom for the public to participate remotely. We'll be discussing what we're going to call Draft 3, which is generally, which you'll get in advance the Friday before Draft 3, which has most, almost all of the pieces in place. So we'll talk about that. And as I mentioned before, we're going to also use the new ClearGov budget platform for the public to do parts of that presentation, so it'll be sort of like a public introduction to this tool, which we're excited about because it's been a long time coming. The draft budget right now, I mean, we're not at Draft 3 now, is with, with the school piece in there, it's hovering around a 6% increase, so we're working to get that done, but that's what, what everything. On Monday, March 4, the AIR Shirley Regional School District did certify their FY25 budget. The AIR assessment would be increasing by $817,044, or a 6% increase. But I want to note that, as the board is aware, this is down from the 1.1 million they had originally proposed. Shirley's increase would be 286,580, or a 3.2% increase. One of the principal things, I think, that the Select Board and the town, the FINCOM and the school committee will need to continue to discuss moving into FY26, let's get FY25 done first, will be the required local contribution. The RLC for AIR is, continues to be a budget driver. Now, the positive is that's an index and a true testament to the, to the town's strength on multiple levels. The other issue, however, it's driving the assessment. So in the interest of time, I know that we'll be talking more about the school budget in both superintendents will be making brief presentations at town meeting on that. So we will be posting to the town's website the certified budget, will be under the budget page from the school. Just as the board is aware, on February 6, and we received the letter, the Neshoba Valley Technical High School certified their budget, AIR's assessment is $1,074,675. presentation. So it'll be sort of like a, a public introduction to this tool, which we're excited about because it's been a long time coming. The draft budget right now, I mean, we're not at Draft 3 now, is, is with, with the school piece in there, it's hovering around a 6% increase. So we're, we're working to get that done, but that's what, with everything. On Monday, March 4th, the Air Shirley Regional School District did certify their FY25 budget. The air assessment would be increasing by $817,044, or a 6% increase. But I want to note that, as the board is aware, this is down from the 1.1 million they had originally proposed. Shirley's increase would be 286,580, or a 3.2% increase. One of the principal things, I think, that the Select Board and the town, the FINCOM and the school committee will need to continue to discuss moving into FY26, let's get FY25 done first, will be the required local contribution. The RLC for air is, continues to be a budget driver. Now, the positive is that's an index and a true testament to the, to the town's strength on multiple levels. The other issue, however, it's driving the assessment. So in the interest of time, I know that we'll be talking more about the school budget. In both superintendents, we'll be making brief presentations at town meeting on that. So we will be posting to the town's website, the certified budget. We'll be under the budget page from the school. Just as the board is aware, on February 6th, and we received the letter, the Neshoba Valley Technical High School certified their budget, air's assessment is $1,074,675. It's actually a $62,000 decrease from last year, because there are six fewer students, as the board is aware. We are wrapping up all of the contract negotiations, which are on schedule to be all wrapped up this month, so that will come into play on the budget. Just want to point out that tomorrow, March 7th at 6:00 PM, the Finance Committee is meeting. The police chief will be making a budget presentation at that meeting. On March 19th, your next Select Board meeting at 6:00 PM will be the FY25 Water and Sewer Rate Public Hearing. Also, for March 19th, I'd like, it'll be in the packet, like to discuss with the board, finalizing the town funding for the 71 Sandy Pond Road. So the application was submitted on Friday. Since the board last met, I did go to the CPC for the determination of eligibility. The committee did vote to have a public hearing, which is tonight at 7:00 after this, on the application, which was sent on Friday. And so if the board, as the board recalls, is the plan is to have $350,000 from CPC and $350,000 from town sources. So we'll have, hopefully, it's, that we will have a discussion and some materials on that for the 19th. I also, that ties into also on the 19th, the Finance Manager and I will be also, would like to discuss with the board, the town's opera spending plan. Since the board last met, we are receiving new information that is increasingly concerning about, as you know, we have till December 30th, 31st to commit the opera funds. And there, there is a lot of talk, we'll get some more information about potentially unused being clawed back or whatever, at the federal level. So we want to talk about that on the 19th and have a couple of proposals for the board to, to consider or to discuss. Almost done. Also on March 19th, we'll have another budget update and another town meeting warrant update. As the warrant continues to develop, you have the memo of all of the topics. We're sitting at about 29 articles. We'll also discuss, the Byboard is going to meet on March 14th at 2:00 PM, and both at the Byboard and then here on the 19th, have a discussion on their proposed uses of free cash, just to start that discussion. So as we do each year, we'll, the Byboard will have looked at it, board talk about some proposed uses. March 29th, the warrant closes, that's a Friday at noon. And then on, is it Tuesday,